Second, Chilton County Commission Meeting to order. We have, let's do our additions and deletions first, and then we'll take one motion to approve the agenda with the additions and deletions.
Okay. The opening of the bids.
Okay.
Is it only additions?
Bank info. I guess that's the bid opening, that's all I had.
Yes.
Okay. So, would you guys ask for a resolution to approve the agenda with the addition?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thanks, guys. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes of October 8th? And if so, could I get a motion? I guess we need to do an amendment to those, a clerical amendment, before we get a motion to approve, right?
Yes, I would like to request that be amended minutes due to a clerical error the requestor had meant for three percent increase to the previous way, not our year.
Okay.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes of the October 8, 2019 meeting with the addition.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Has everybody had the opportunity to review the claims? And if so, could I get a motion to pay the bills of October 22nd?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We're at our public comments section as now, and the only list that we have is veteran services, so you guys come up and...
Well, good evening, gentlemen.
Hello.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Roger Wilson, I'm the District 3 manager with the Alabama Department of Veteran Affairs. And John Jones, he's also with me, he's the Veteran Service Officer for Shelby County. He also get most of the veterans from Chilton County. We're both retired Marines. I've been with the Alabama Department of Veteran Affairs since 2008. This job is very rewarding, in more ways than one. I see it as a way to stay connected with our veterans, and also a great opportunity to serve them. I want to thank you for the opportunity to meet with you this evening. The reason I'm here is to express our desire to reopen an office here in Chilton County. We had an office here in Clanton up until around 2012, and the office had to close due to some budget constraints. If I may, I would like to direct your attention to the presentation before you. I will try to go through this very briefly, but if you turn to page two, you will see the mission. And our mission at the Alabama Department of Veteran Affairs is to help veterans, their dependents, and survivors receive both state and federal benefits that they are entitled to. The claims process can be complicated, and it can be very frustrating. And so that's where we come in, because there are a lot of different laws that govern veteran benefits. If you would turn to page three, you will see the mission essential services there. You'll see that there are 363,000 veterans in the state of Alabama. Obviously, there's 67 counties, and we have a footprint in 50 of those counties. And we have a new commissioner that came on board back in February of this year, and his goal, his desire, is to get a footprint in as many counties as possible. If I could direct your attention to page four, you'll see the types of benefits that veterans are entitled to. The main financial benefits there are disability compensation and pension. Those are financial benefits for veterans. There are a number of other benefits that are available to veterans, a lot of times they don't know about these benefits. So that's our job. We want to make sure that veterans are not only educated, but they get the service, they get the support that they need to get these benefits. If you go to page five, you will see that the Alabama Department of Veteran Affairs is broken down into three districts. I have District 2, I have 25 counties in my district. I have 15 HUP offices. In other words, I have Veteran Service Officers in those 15 offices full-time. We also have three itinerant offices. I have a VSO that will go into those offices once or twice a week. I have eight offices that are closed. The office here in Clanton is closed, and so we would like to open up an office here in Clanton. This would be a state employee, but it would be the county Veteran Service Officer. The Service Officer would represent the county. If you go to the next page, you will see the VA expenditures, and what I want to bring your attention to is, would be the compensation and pension expenditures. That's $16,747,000. That's the amount of expenditures the VA pays out to veterans here in Chilton County. And obviously, that helps the economy, because the veterans, they're out buying groceries, and cars, and homes, and so on and so forth. If you would flip to page number seven, which is the last page, you will see the support that is needed if we open up an office here in Chilton County. Obviously, we would need an office space. We would need telephone, fax lines, we would need a dedicated IP address, internet, and we also need a decision. That is really all that I have. If you have any questions for me, I will certainly try to answer any questions that you may have.
Go for it.
I have some things to say. First of all, thank you, and John, for what you've done. Joseph, you and I talked about this a month ago, and I've got personal experience with this. Actually, that man right there helped me. I went to Montgomery for two years. I've never been treated so bad in my life. I went to Columbiana and met with John, and with, to be exact, 103 days, he had my issue resolved. And I strongly suggest that we do something to help the veterans in our county that is going through what I went through for two years. Because if it hadn't been for Veterans Affairs and that man there, I would still be wandering around. And I think you had an issue with an employee. Average people don't know how critical this is.
Yes, sir.
We have a, what do we have here now, the Department of, we have a...
I think you have a DAV rep, Disabled American Veterans rep?
Disabled American Veterans.
I think that employee, well, he's not an employee, I think he's a volunteer.
She is.
And she's a volunteer. And so we're looking for an employee, someone who's held responsible and accountable.
Well, I'm just, I wasn't asking about her, I was just saying, we have an office we provide for them now. Is that something similar to what you're asking for, or no?
It's similar, but we not only deal with federal benefits, but we deal with state benefits. We have representatives that are in Montgomery, that work for the state, that kind of give a precursory view to veteran claims, and also they help with the appeal process.
And the reason I ask, because my father was in the service too, so, and in 77, he went to be with the Lord, but I have an idea that I've been pondering on about this, because the problem we have up here with this office here, is our veterans getting in and out up there, climbing stairs with disabilities we have. I seen a lady the other day, I felt so sorry for her, she's a veteran, and she had a major disability, but she was still walking, trying to get up there. Because we cannot vote on this, because it's not in a work session as part of our resolution, I'd like to, to visit this with these guys on an idea that I've had for some time, I just ain't been brought to, of a location that probably could assist this.
Yes, sir.
Of a location that is not being used, that I don't think we realize is not being used, how about that? And I haven't made these guys aware of that, so I'm glad you brought it up tonight.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, mind me interrupting you.
No, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to work with Commissioner Hardy on this issue.
Yes, sir.
This is extremely personal to me.
Yes, sir.
I would like to work with him on this issue.
Okay. Will you guys tackle it and come back with some recommendations for us?
Yes, sir.
We'll be ready.
Mr. Chairman, the office that we've got now, is whenever we did have a representative here, that's the office they used.
It was up in the corner.
Yeah. There's actually two offices up there, and there's a phone line and everything already in there.
Mr. Catan, I think I've got a little bit better plans than that right there, and I'll discuss it with Mr. Langston and inform you about it, that y'all think you'll like.
Okay.
If it's okay with this commission.
Yep, y'all, put your heads together and come back for recommendations.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Does she have your contact information, even though we got this pamphlet?
Yes, sir, and I will, sir.
Please make sure she's got it, so we can contact you.
I got their numbers also.
Okay. Great.
Thank you guys for coming tonight.
Thank you for your time, thank you for your service, and not my freedom, I don't take that for granted.
All right, guys, we'll move on to the department reports, and we'll go to the county engineer report managers, we'll handle those. Okay, thank you.
He'd request a resolution, surplus, CP 26, so, O9 F-150.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
And I need to request a resolution to purchase off a state bid, one Ram pickup truck, 1,500.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? And this would be for the road department.
This for the road department.
Okay. All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
And I need to request a resolution for the purchase of a identical truck for the liter agent.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
And I need to request a resolution for the matching funds for Kenro 51 pavement preservation project.
So moved.
Can we add, can I discuss something now, we need to wait?
We need a second before we discuss.
Okay, second.
We have a motion and a second, it's open for discussion.
Oh, Joseph, you will, Joe, I'd like to add the approximate amount of $150,000 to that.
Approximately, estimated to be close to $150,000.
Okay, is that noted?
For the county's part.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, your man.
Thank you so much. Revenue Commissioner Little?
It's just him.
It's just him.
Thank you. I won't see him tonight. I'm here with a request to reclassify Mary Mims and motor vehicles from clerk to supervisor slash assistant chief clerk.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion?
Tim, that position is already there, it's not, you're not creating a position or anything, have you? It's already there. Okay. I just wanted...
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you all. Y'all have any questions about our operations? Why don't you get me?
No, sir.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Just keep getting money.
EMA Director, Derek Wright.
Good evening, Zim.
Good evening.
I have two requests, gonna be for reclassifying Nick Bolton to EMA, as Deputy EMA Director and CRI Coordinator, for, at 15 and a quarter, 15, 25 an hour.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, floor is open for discussion, any questions?
Derek, I'm gonna ask you the same question I asked Tim. Is that a position that you've already got, or are you creating a position?
Somebody creating a position, or re-titling him. Nick is funded through CRI, he is 100% reimbursed from Department of Public Health. The reason I did that is because there was a motion to, or there was a resolution to drop the 3% total. I feel like getting Nick up to 15, 25 is where he needs to be, probably more than that. He is one of the only, probably five positions or less in this whole county that requires a degree, so I would like to get him up there to a decent pay scale.
Roger, since there's not a position already, the commission have to approve a new position, is that correct?
All I understood, he was keeping his deputy director's...
I'm just adding, he's receiving additional duties. I'm putting him over CRI total, and what does, I've always been the person who handles that, but Nick's gonna be doing all the exercise, like tomorrow morning he'll be in Jasper at 7:30 doing the exercise, so I would like to keep him as handling that by himself, that way he knows all the go, part of that, since he is funded through that position. So I would like to put him over that position totally.
So you're saying we'll be okay, just for that?
Yes, he's having additional duties and additional pay.
Okay.
So, so I have one thought, Roger. We have a resolution that says an employee can't have more than a 3% raise without a job reclassification. Would we need to reclassify the job, or is this an appropriate job reclassification?
This essentially would equal a reclassification, he's being assigned additional duties and responsibilities.
Okay. Okay. Any more questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
And the other, other one would be to give myself the 3% raise.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Any questions from me or my board?
If we're not hearing complaints, you're doing a good job.
Right.
All right. Sheriff, your turn.
So I'd like to ask for a resolution to hire Jake Blackman, be hired as a full-time warehouse security officer.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
All right. Next, I'd like to hire, a request for a resolution hire Brandon Warren, as full-time deputy.
So moved.
So, we'll get a second.
Sure, yeah.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
And I'd like to request a resolution for Hunter Hurst, to be reclassified as a full-time deputy.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
And lastly, our coolers at the jail, we had to buy two more coolers. This, this will be taken out of the maintenance money that goes to the jail, so that's where that money will be taken care of, because we've been nickel and diming the one we had, it just kept breaking down, so. Purchased two coolers, which will be taken out of the jail maintenance fund.
Okay.
Good deal.
We have a motion to allow the sheriff to take the money out of the jail fund.
So moved.
We have a motion, motion and second, any further discussion?
Sheriff, you started looking at any of the renovation part?
Yes, sir. I think we're getting prices now on camera systems, you know, different things like that, and the jail, the doors, you know, were some of our bigger issues that, you know, we had to get done, you know, painting and stuff like that. That'll be, I'd rather get the safety part of it done first, you know, the cameras and the doors are two of our bigger, bigger priorities that, you know, need to be dealt with, and that's, those are some of the ones we're gonna get done first.
Good.
And then you start to whittlin' away at some of the smaller, you know, smaller issues we have.
Okay.
Just have to get those done first.
Any other questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. All right. We now see you here, do y'all have anything? All right, thank you. Ms. Carter with transit.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Need to request permission to hire Stella Fulmer as a part-time driver, she's filling a vacancy.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
And I need to request permission to do an emergency hire to replace a full-time driver that's leaving.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. All right, so if I haven't missed anyone, and that would be the appropriate time for y'all to correct me if I have, we'll move on to commissioner reports. I was contacted by the hospital property board, this is not the hospital board, but the hospital property board, asking for us to open nominations for a member. That board is comprised of three people, they currently only have two board members. Those board members are Wayne McKinnon and Alan Payton, and so I would ask for a resolution that we open nominations for that position.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. And they have respectfully submitted a request to nominate, what's Bear's real name?
William.
William Newton. I apologize. So this will stay open for further nominations until we complete the normal process. Are there any other nominations tonight?
I have one, I would like to ask if Commissioner Matt Mims would like to consider serving on this board, because he represents us on the hospital board, if it's not a conflict.
Be glad to.
Okay, so we have two nominations. All right, guys, well, we'll come back to it and follow the process. Thank you. We are down to Commissioner Langston, if I haven't overlooked anyone.
I'll start with Manuka, and then I will go to the one that our administrator added to bank. I'm gonna request a resolution to allow our engineering department to prepare pads at Manuka Park in the second phase, to prepare that for our sites.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say that, I'd like to thank Steve for the, what the undertaking he has taken on this, I mean, he has taken this, as they always say, the bull by the horn, and he is literally doing a great job up there. And thank you, Steve, what you do.
Yes, sir. I appreciate the kind words.
If the public was aware of all the work you had put into trying to get these parks situated correctly, they would, everybody that passed you on the street would tell you thank you.
Well, I appreciate the kind words, but y'all do it too. I have, I'd like to request a resolution to allow our engineering department to improve the aesthetics of our entrance at State Road 31 and County Road 146.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Commissioner Langston, you had mentioned earlier about the potential for a power of attorney from one of the landowners. Figure out how y'all wanna handle that, and we'll schedule a meeting with them, and present them with what we need. You may wanna get with Roger, however we need to do that, but we'll, we'll schedule a meeting and present them, and try to get that taken care of for you.
That's fine.
Okay.
Roger, I'll do it at your convenience, but I certainly would like to do this quick, if possible, while we got this train rolling, I wanna keep it going. I would like to request a resolution to solicit bids to complete the sewer for nine camper sites in first phase.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
That's all on Manuka. The next item I have, half, is bank info. Couple of months ago, the commission requested me to solicit bids for $5 million for road paving, and to get terms and rates, as we needed, solicited from six financial institutions. We had three that responded in the required time, and when they came in, I had our administrator to vault them, nobody has seen them, and I will let our chairman take it from here.
Okay, so how I'm gonna handle this, if y'all are okay with it, we're gonna open these bids, we're gonna pass them around, let everybody see them, we'll return them to Steve, and he and Ms. Sylvia, along with Roger, can review the bids, and make sure they're in compliance with what was requested, and then they can come back at our next...
Riverbank was the first.
You just call out the...
Yes. Riverbank and Trust. Here we go. Okay, BB and T, we'll pass that one down, we'll be looking at it while that one's looking the other way.
The other one's Regions.
Okay, and then we have one from Regions. And you said you solicited six financial institutions, and these are the three responses.
Yes. I had one that wanted extra time, and to keep apples, I told him the cutoff time was the same for everybody, unless this was extended, if you predict.
All right, y'all.
That's shocking, man. That is very shocking.
Somebody's wanting it.
Somebody. You told me to get good.
That's good stuff, Steve.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, on this again, in a public meeting, I would really like to thank our administrator for putting together our financials again, and I would like to thank our attorney, because he worked with me on this and made sure our language was perfect. So I would like to thank these two again, and Makisha, because she assists. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Keep that with us. All right, we'll move, if y'all don't mind, we can kinda move forward while y'all are looking over those, and as I said, just make sure they land in Steve's hands tonight. If, we're at the administrator's portion, Ms. Sylvia?
I'd like to request a resolution to pay two excess bids for Tommy Cox in the amount $1,839.37 and $579 cents.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pay the two excess bids to Tommy Cox. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
I'd like to request a resolution to increase the reappraisal carryover by $8,000, and increase the current budget by $8,000 due to grant payment made for last fiscal year.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
I'd like to request any nominations for Chilton-Clanton Public Library, and to close the nominations.
Do we have any more nominations?
I make a motion, we close nominations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the nominations for the Chilton-Clanton Public Library. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. And that means that Kim Moore will be the appointee, since she was the only nomination.
I'd like to request a resolution to open a checking account with Marion Bank, along with signatories, for the jail maintenance.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Motion carries.
I'd like to request that we open nominations for Kawako. They're asking for a nomination to their board, and they request that we nominate Whitney Barlow.
I make a motion, we open nominations for Kawako board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right.
I nominate Whitney Barlow. Got to have that.
She, she.
Oh, she's not with that?
Yeah. Yeah, so it's on the, it's on the list.
You good with that, Whitney?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Do you have anything else, Ms. Sylvia?
That is it. Thank you very much.
Well, at this time.
I missed, I missed one of those.
Yeah, I haven't seen the third one either.
The first, it was the second one, the BB and T.
He's reviewing them. I haven't had them up to yet.
BB and T's the only one I haven't looked at.
All right, well, we are at that portion of our yearly meeting where we are going to vote on the new chairman, and so at this time, I would like to step down as chairman and turn the meeting over to our attorney, Roger Bay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As is your custom and is now my duty and responsibility, I will open the floor for nominations from your membership for the nomination of chairman of the Chilton County Commission.
I nominate Joseph Parnell for chairman.
Second.
Are there any other nominations?[1699.04]